From the Board of Zoning Appeals on a variation of assigned ordinance, as I understand it. And so we will turn the floor over to your applicants.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us and to our appeal here. My name is Sophia Halli. I am legal counsel for the applicant for record purposes. My Ohio bar number is 0091361, and for preservation of the record purposes, we state and intend to appeal any adverse decision. We have prepared some materials that I think-
Excuse me. James, is the microphone working out there? I don't think it is.
Yeah.
It's working?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Much better.
I have some materials I'd like to circulate, if that's all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So in a moment, I'm going to ask my client to join me. I am here joined by Dan Nielsen and John Carrara, who are with Kenjo Outdoor Advertising. And I'm also joined here by Teamsters 100 Representatives, Bill Davis, the president-elect, as well as the vice president-elect. What you're going to hear today is a proposal about a request for a variance that Evendale could grant. There's a number of variances we're asking for: size, height, off-site advertising, which I don't know how into recent Supreme Court cases you are. It's kind of a hot topic amongst municipalities as to how you can restrict off-site signs. But be that as it may, we're asking for several variances. And the number-one thing I would like to make clear, and that I think my client would like to make clear, is that we are interested in making a proposal that is supportive of the village, that showcases the village as part of the community, that supports the village, and something that you are all happy with. We've met previously with the mayor to just sort of discuss some ideas and what we could put together. And if you turn to the first tab of the packet I passed out, we've worked with a couple designers and came up with a few ideas. When you think about a billboard, you think of just a poll sign. That's certainly not what we're offering here to do. My clients will reiterate that they're open to whatever you guys like the looks of. If you flip through here, there are several different ideas. We're happy to have it showcase the Village of Evendale. In fact, we tried to come up with some designs that reflected the bridge renovation and some of the pillars that are ready in the community. I mean, if you look at around Cincinnati in general, there's instances where people have been able to cooperate to come up with signs that showcase the community, like the IKEA Westchester sign. That IKEA sign was not code, but by including the advertisement for Westchester as well, it's something that is a neat part of the community and supports Westchester, but also advertises the IKEA and that location. So if you flip through these pictures, these are ideas, but they're certainly subject to change, open to change. Whatever you all think, whatever you like, if you like the ideas, I personally, as an untrained attorney, think the first option looks pretty neat. If there's something else that you would like, we're open to look into those things, too. When we had our hearing before the zoning board of appeals, they ended it saying that, "Wow, Sophia, you're a great communicator, very persuasive." And I said, "Thank you very much." But they said, "Listen, this isn't our call. You're asking for some variances here. We think this is a city council decision. We don't think we should be making this decision, so please come back to council and ask them what they think." After that, we met with the mayor to try to get some more input. So we're certainly willing to come up with different ideas. And I apologize for just giving you guys all of this input, but I want you to understand where we're coming from. You'll hear testimony in just a moment about how the money that my client is wanting to offer to Teamsters is so important to their building. They have an aging building, declining membership. There's a number of ways in which the building's not ADA compliant. The money from the sale of property to Kenjo will help support that building. And as an accommodation and for us to make this something that's positive for Evendale, which we would like it to be, we're also willing to give advertising to the village on the sign. So that could be advertising for concerts, that could be advertising for safety, weather, community events, missing persons. That's something that Kenjo would give as part of the conditions of approval. And in addition to that, Kenjo doesn't actually need the land where the billboard is going to be located. They're willing to let the village use that land however it sees fit, so far, so long as they can have an easement so that they can maintain it. So giving the land to Evendale would be great if you need storage for something. We can get into more details of that. But I've talked enough, I think. I'm going to ask Mr. Davis to come up, please, and if you would, state your name for the record. And please, thank you.
For the record, ICRC televises all of these, and that is our record. We don't take notes or anything like that, but that becomes our record then of what's going on here tonight.
Understand.
Yeah.
My name is Bill Davis. I am the president of Teamsters Local 100. I'm a principal officer for our organization. We are a nonprofit labor union. We've had our charter since 1913. Our original building was downtown. I can't remember the street it's on, but if you go down there, the facade still has the etched limestone, kind of like what you have behind you, Mr. Mayor, and with the Teamster emblem. We call it the bug. We outgrew that building, coming out of the '60s, going into the '70s, when we peaked at our membership, right around 12,500 members. We were, I believe, we bequeathed the land that we built on, which is right on I-75 Frontage, 2100 Oak Road, for a dollar, and built that building. And I think it was completed in 1974. At that time, we had 12 business agents. We ran a health and welfare fund out of the building. Has a large kitchen in it that was meant to possibly give us the ability to be a hiring hall. Over the years, due to the deregulation of freight and certain other variables, economically, our membership has declined from 12,500 down to about 4,500. In doing so, our building has endured, but needs a lot of repairs. We're elected on a three-year basis. I'm in my first term as the president and principal officer. We have made several improvements to the building, starting on the roof. We had a lot of leaks going on. With the aid of a PPP loan through the American Recovery Act, we were able to get some money and some funding for that. We still have some leaks, though. Our windows are aging. We have four total bathrooms in the building. Two of them we've managed to renovate and get back up to ADA standards. The others are grandfathered in. Our elevator is in the same status. Our upstairs has carpeting in it that's 35 to 40 years old. We're making do with an aged building. But for those of you who drive up 75 and look to your right as you're coming north, you probably recognize our flag that flies proudly every day. And we are faced with a dilemma of either possibly selling that building to the surrounding industry in the area, or to try to preserve it and bring it back as we try to bring our membership numbers back. We have several organizing campaigns going on with companies around the greater Cincinnati area and northern Kentucky area, which our charter includes. And we hope to maybe one day, I mean, it's ambitious to think we'll get back to 12,500 members, but that's our goal. But in doing that, if we're to keep the building, it does need a lot more work. So we're looking into ways to fund those improvements. So our building sits on approximately six acres of land that, quite frankly, the bottom, I call it the grassy knoll on the southwest corner, is about an acre of grass that we've basically, all we've done is pay to have the grass cut and pay property taxes on it. So it's something that we could carve out of our parcel and use that money for the capital to make the improvements to that building that, quite frankly, reflects on our organization and reflects on the community of Evendale. So we started in the talks about a year ago, year and a half, with Kenjo. They approached us and originally wanted to lease the land on a 25-year deal. But with the dynamics of our politics within the Teamster Union and all labor unions, we have elections every three years. So I didn't think it was responsible to saddle our organization with a 25-year commitment when I'm only going to be around for a minimum of three years. So as we talked and kicked ideas back and forth, we finally came to the conclusion that maybe the best option is to sell them a piece of the land. And we signed the contract contingent upon the ODOT giving us their blessing, which has happened. And now the hurdle in front of us is having Evendale give us permission. So as a nonprofit organization, we are saddled to our dues that we collect from our membership, which, in a perfect world, goes to represent our members, not necessarily to maintain property. But it is part of the game. So this is a way where I think it can be a win-win for the Teamsters Union, as well as it could be a win-win for the City of Evendale. I drove up 75 every day and watched you erect the beautiful bridge out here over Glendale-Milford. And some of the signs that I've seen them draw up, I think, bringing that bridge and the sign together, and the partnership that they're offering the City of Evendale, is one where the sign can benefit your community as well. As I was driving in today, I saw you guys are having a concert sometime soon. And I mean, I saw it on your sign just out here, but I guess only the people going up Reading Road would see that. So what a great opportunity it would be for you guys to advertise your community projects right there on I-75, where how many cars go by there every day?
Somewhere between 9, 8, 10,000.
Yeah, 1,000.
Yes, sorry.
Nearly 100,000 cars go up and down through there. Many of those, I'm sure, are your citizens. So I just wanted to give you a brief explanation as to why we are entering into this partnership with Kenjo, and we certainly hope that the Village of Evendale agrees and comes on board with us.
I do have a question. What will happen to Teamsters in your office or your location there if we do not grant the permission to put up and for you to sell? What's plan B?
We'll just continue to struggle along with what we have. I mean, I don't think it's, the money that we've, the money that we'll receive from the property will go a long way to get us where we need to be. But then, instead of taking baby steps, we can take a couple huge steps. And then, once you get, I said, I don't know, everybody here I'm going to assume owns property, but if you got, if you let your house deteriorate for an extended period of time, it makes it that much harder to get back to where you need. This will get us where we need to be, where we can, where our annual expenditures will not be what they'll be without the money, if that makes any sense. It makes up for lost time.
Any other questions? I have some questions about size and so forth, but I imagine these gentlemen can answer that better than you can.
I'm sure they can.
I do have a question with regards to if, obviously, you have a long-term contract that you are expected to do with the sign manufacturer. What happens if you close that office?
Well, that's their, it'll be their land. We're selling them-
It goes with the land.
We're selling them one acre.
Okay. So it stays with the land?
Yeah.
Okay. But you still benefit during that period of time, or the sale of the land is what is giving you the money?
Yes. And so we've been, we've owned that land since 1974. And then, quite frankly, in today's commercial real estate market for buildings of our type, that's not a good time to try and sell.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Can I ask you just a few questions?
Sure.
Is there-
Is there a concern that without the sale of this property, that perhaps Teamsters may not be able to maintain its current building?
It's possible. You know, under the economic circumstances that we're going through every day right now, you never know what tomorrow's going to bring. So, you know, I think now is better than tomorrow, for sure. I mean, anybody who spends any time at Home Depot and watches what the price of a 2x4 has went to in the last year, and all the other supplies that you need to get, and the scarcity of it all, I said, I think it's time. But I also believe that, I believe in our organization, and I believe that we will persevere. I think it's cyclical, and I think the American people are ready to, the American people are ready to embrace organized labor again. So I'll stop there without getting on my soapbox.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. I'd like to now invite John Carrara, President of Kenjo Outdoor, to come up, please. Thank you for coming and speaking with us. I think I'd like to get into some of the nitty-gritty about the signs, if that's all right with you. And let's refer to the packets that I've circulated with council. And let's turn to tab two. Could you sort of walk us through, these are signs that are adjacent to where our proposed sign is. Can you walk us through the comparability of size and height?
My name is John Kirira. My address is 1842 Shawnee Drive in Sidney, Ohio. I am the president of the company. When we came, we approached the city to try to, the village, to try to get the sign approved. We wanted something that is standard. The sign industry has existed since 1959, when highway beautification happened. And just like anything else, like when you print a piece of paper, it's eight by 11, signs come in very, very standard, industry-standard sizes. The most common size that is probably 90% of the signs out there is what they call a 14x48, 14 feet by 48 feet long. That's like the screen size of the sign.
What was that again? What's the size?
14 by 48.
14 by 48. It's a pretty standard size. It's like basically saying an eight by 11 sheet of paper. To be honest, I think that ratio might actually be about the same. But that is a billboard industry-standard size. It's probably, if I had to estimate, easily 90% of the signs out there.
Would that be the standard size of a billboard?
That is the standard size of the billboard. So what we did in this document is, we went down the stretch of 75 and documented, detailed about, I don't know how many she put in here, but different signs down 75 and up 75, and put the sizes over here. And most of them, like this is the first one, it's probably one of the first signs you'll see if you drive south. It is a 14x48, 672 square feet. So that is the first image. The second image, so, by the way, 14 by 48 comes up to be 672 square feet. That's pretty standard. The next sign is actually one of our signs. It's in the city of Lockland. We built that, I think it was July of last year. In that case, the lot size was too small for us to go with a 48-foot-long sign. But we had to stay within the 672, so in this case, we did by 18 by 37, which comes up to 660 square feet. The next image is just another sign on 75. It's a 14x48. The next sign is 14x48. So you get the trend. Most of those signs are 14x48 because that is a billboard industry-standard size. So what we're requesting is the same size. We're requesting a 14x48 screen size for the signs, for the sign we're proposing.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the advertising that we would like to provide to Evendale. It's my understanding that we were offering 5% of all spots, which equates to 540 spots throughout a calendar day for a total of 72 minutes. Could you sort of explain how that would break down, please?
Yes. So the sign we're proposing is an electronic sign. It is on a federal interstate, and it has to abide by the state code. ODOT requires that anything that comes on the screen has to stay fixed for eight seconds. So anything that comes up cannot change. Like, I cannot play videos because it's going to be distracting to the traffic. So this is a state regulation that anything that comes up has to stay on the sign fixed without changing for eight seconds. Most of the clients wants to be seen once every minute. So basically, the sign have this loop that it repeats everything it does, and the loop is about 60 seconds long. So if each person is getting eight seconds, and the loop goes around every 60 seconds, you're pushing about six or seven, seven or eight clients per minute, and then they start over and over and over again, 24 hours, seven days a week. So what we're proposing is, we're going to give, if you do the calculation, it comes up to be 10,800 spots a day. If you take 24 hours a day, you divide by eight seconds, which is the number of spots, it comes up to be that number. Each customer, if I do eight customers, each customer would get about 1,400 spots a day. So we're willing to give the Evendale for its own use, whether it's for concerts, or missing children, or some event promotion, we're going to give them 5% of the sign. Basically, every day, you get 5% of the sign, which equates to be the 500 and some spots a day, 540 spots a day. What that means is, the sign will do its calculation, and every day, you should, you know, every time, whatever your advertising comes up, you're going to get at least 540 times in that day, if that makes sense. And say, for example, I don't have enough customers to fill the sign. Say, you know, times are tough, and I only have two or three clients, that's all I got. So basically, everybody gets double the time, because the loop just starts a little sooner. If you have the seven people, the first one takes eight seconds, second person takes eight seconds, by the time you get to the last person, now your one minute is over and it starts over. If you don't have the seven clients, say, for example, business is tough, and I only have three or four clients, the loop is eight seconds times the three clients, so every 25 seconds, the loop starts over because I don't have enough clients. So that's what I'm saying is, at bare minimum, you get 540. But there's a pretty good chance you're going to get a lot more, because this is an electronic sign, and you have customers, like, for example, King's Island, maybe they have an event going on next weekend, so they only want to rent it for one week. So for one week, the sign might have the seven clients, but the following week, you drop down to six. You know, Kroger might be doing the same thing, so it fractuates when it comes to occupancy. And every time it drops below the maximum number of clients, everybody gets more time. I hope that makes more sense.
Yes, it does.
John, it's my understanding that this business is really your baby, along with Dan, that you're trying to build something for your families and for your future, and it's important that you work and partner with reputable companies in advertising. Is that accurate? Can you speak to that, please?
Yes. So I'm 35 years old, Dan is 34 years old. We are electrical engineers. We used to work at Honda, north of Dayton, Honda, the manufacturing factory for Honda, the vehicle manufacturer. We're requesting a fourteen forty-eight screen size for the signs, for the sign we're proposing.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the advertising that we would like to provide to Evendale. It's my understanding that we've, we're offering five percent of all spots, which equates to five hundred and forty spots throughout a calendar day for a total of seventy-two minutes. Could you sort of explain how that would break down, please?
Yes. So, the sign we're proposing is an electronic sign. It is on a federal interstate, and it has to abide by the state code. ODOT requires that anything that comes on the screen has to stay fixed for eight seconds. So anything that comes up cannot change, like I cannot play videos because it's gonna be distracting to the traffic. So this is a state regulation that anything that comes up has to stay on the sign fixed without changing for eight seconds. Most of the clients wants to be seen once every minute. So basically, like the sign have this loop that it repeats everything it does, and the loop is about sixty seconds long. So if each person is getting eight seconds, and the loop goes around every sixty seconds, you're pushing about six or seven, seven or eight clients per minute, and then they start over and over and over again, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. So, what we're proposing is, we're going to give, if you do the calculation, it comes up to be ten thousand eight hundred spots a day. If you take twenty-four hours a day, you divide by eight seconds, which is the number of spots, it comes up to be that number. Each customer, if I do eight customers, each customer would get about one thousand four hundred spots a day. So we're willing to give the Evendale for its own use, whether it's for concerts, or missing children, or some event promotion, we're going to give them five percent of the sign. Basically, every day you get five percent of the sign, which equates to be the five hundred and some spots a day, five hundred and forty spots a day. What that means is, the sign will do its calculation, and every day, you should, you know, every time you, whatever your advertising comes up, you're gonna get at least five hundred and forty times in that day, if that makes sense. And say, for example, I don't have enough customers to fill the sign. Say, you know, times are tough, and I only have two or three clients, that's all I got. So basically, everybody gets double the time, because the loop just starts a little sooner. If you have the seven people, the first one takes eight seconds, second person takes eight seconds, by the time you get to the last person, now your one minute is over and it starts over. If you don't have the seven clients, say, for example, business is tough, and I only have three or four clients, the loop is eight seconds times the three clients, so every twenty-five seconds, the loop starts over because I don't have enough clients. So that's what I'm saying is, at bare minimum, you get five forty, but there's a pretty good chance you're gonna get a lot more, because this is an electronic sign, and you have customers, like, for example, King's Island, maybe they have an event going on next weekend, so they only want to land it for one week. So for one week, the sign might have the seven clients, but the following week, you drop down to six. You know, Kroger might be doing the same thing, so it fractuates when it comes to occupancy. And every time it drops below the maximum number of clients, everybody gets more time. I hope that makes more sense.
Yes, it does.
John, it's my understanding that this business is really your baby, along with Dan, that you're trying to build something for your families and for your future, and it's important that you work and partner with reputable companies in advertising. Is that accurate? Can you speak to that, please?
Yes. So, I'm thirty-five years old, Dan is thirty-four years old. We are electrical engineers. We used to work at Honda, north of Dayton, Honda, the manufacturing factory for Honda, the vehicle manufacturer. We met there, and after knowing each other for a few years, we decided we wanted to venture out and do something for ourselves. So we started this business, and I don't know if you've had a chance to look at our website, but we have signs in six states, a dozen cities, very, very good-looking signs. This is our lifetime, this is our portfolio to, you know, feed our family, and we're here for the long run. We don't, we try to spend as much as we can on the signs to make them very presentable, and that's why, like, when it comes to the documents and the designs we're proposing, we're just brainstorming. What is it we can do to work with the city, with the village of Evendale, to make you guys happy, make a sign that looks nice? You can put different conditions, maybe so, for example, you wanted to look a different way, we're just trying to find a way to meet you in the middle. We've done this in different cities, but every case is different. Like, we have a good example in Sidney, Ohio. We just built one of, basically, we went through the same thing we're doing here, went in front of the city council, presented the design we were trying to do, but in that case, it's a little different. We could not do the same thing here, because that was a four-way intersection, it's a traffic right, so the kind of sign we were able to build is a little different than what we would be able to build on seventy-five. So, what we are proposing is a few different ideas. We are happy to modify them, to, you know, make them more presentable, more appealing to the city. But yes, we are hoping to be good partners, and that's what happened with the Teamster. When we approached them, we typically don't try to own properties. A lease is good for us, you know, our leases are very good, like, if we do a twenty-five-year lease, you know, it's, our attorneys had made sure, like, those leases, you know, will be good for twenty-five years, no matter what happens. But in their case, they didn't need the money upfront, and they had so much property, where we were trying to build the sign, that like, instead of leasing from us and paying us X number of dollars every month, is there any way you can give us the money upfront, that way we can use it to do our thing? Then the idea of buying the property came in. I remember I went there, I was present when they voted to sell the property. I think they almost had probably a hundred people, maybe more. There was a lot of members there, and, you know, Bill explained to them why they, you know, they need to sell this property, how much money they're gonna get, what they're gonna do with this kind of money, and then they took a vote. And I believe it was a unanimous vote for, from the members, that they should sell that property, so they basically sell the property to us. We would build the sign, it barely takes, depending on the design we pick, it doesn't take much space. Usually about fifty square feet of the ground, which is where the pole goes, that's all it takes on the ground. Everything else is in the air. So, the next idea we had was, we're in the, we're not in the rent business, we can carry on owning the property. So long as we can get to keep our sign and learn our business, we have no use for the rent. So that's the, that's what we were proposing, that if the village has any use for it, whether it's parking the snowplows, or, you know, storing salt there, or making a park out of it, we just wanna keep the sign. We're willing to let the city use it for whatever they want.
How much land is it that you, I mean, I understand we would need to have an easement, but how much land is being purchased?
I believe it's a little of an acre, a little bit of an acre. Yeah. A little bit of an acre. It's an open, very nice area, actually, like, almost can build a building, just very level ground, next to the highway. How we came up with the price, we basically had Teamster get us a quote. He found a property that just sold north of his property. We looked at how much that company sold per acre, and that's how we came up with the number we gave them. So, the rent is actually a very good land that can be used for something, but it's a little bit of an acre.
I have a question before you step down, and something that is concerning. We just spent a few million dollars on that bridge.
Yes.
We're proud of that bridge. It's, we consider it the front door of our village. We are a village, not a city, just for the...
Yes, yes.
But, one of the things that we face is, especially, you know, and we appreciate all your effort in trying to accommodate, you know, what we would want, but one of the concerns that I have is something that is so prominent up in the air as a billboard, and we have this beautiful bridge that we are maintaining, we're responsible for, that that billboard would come under disrepair. Or, you know, because the economics, and again, we don't know the future, we don't know whether, you know, it sounds like you're starting a nice business, and that's great, and you have all kinds of aspirations, all wonderful, but life is what it is, and we don't know what the future may hold, and if it goes into disrepair, somebody buys you out, they, you're so successful that somebody says, you know, we're gonna give you a sweet deal, and they're gonna buy you out, now all of a sudden, they're not maintaining things the way we would expect.
Okay.
And now, we have something, we, not too long ago, we had a couple of water towers that were very prominent up in the sky, one on the GE property, and another across the street on what is the Brendanmore property, just east, or, yeah, east of where, you know, you're looking. And the conclusion was, one, you know, paint it, fix it, clean it up. GE did, they painted it that green. The other, they tore it out, because it was, again, prominently in the air, and it was rusted, it was not functional, and it was an eyesore for everybody. And so when we're spending a few million dollars to say, "Look at our beautiful village", the last thing we want is anything that's going to detract from that, especially, and again, I like, part of me says, "I like the idea of you're mimicking our bridge", but another part of me says, "Well, people are gonna perceive that as Evendale-sponsored, Evendale-built, because it, again, it's mimicking the bridge, and then all of a sudden, it's in disrepair, and all of a sudden, man, Evendale's letting it go."
Okay.
And so, that's, and I don't know whether the answer is, you post a bond for maintenance and to tear it down, or whatever would have to be done, but there'd have to be some way to address that type of maintenance, before I even consider anything, all the other issues.
That's a really good point, and I think with zoning relief, it's common to put in conditions, and I think it would be perfectly appropriate to have condition of approval be maintenance, and they could lose their right to have the billboard there if they don't maintain it, which would be just a huge loss for them, because this is the lifeblood of their company. I've worked with Kathy Ryan and Tim Burke before, and I'm certain that we could coordinate and put together some sort of restrictive covenant that would say that, or restriction, that it must be maintained in good repair, and basically, we get, lose our property rights if we don't repair it, and...
But then, and also to cover the cost of tearing it down if need be.
Oh, absolutely, and that is a very good, legit concern. I mean, I actually appreciate you bringing it up, because you're right, you know, you never know tomorrow. Maybe tomorrow is, you know, ten years from now, it's gonna be owned by a different company. So to address your concern, we would be open to doing that, posting a bond. Yes, we would be open to anything that gives you peace of mind, but that is a very legit concern. That is a, that's a good concern. But we are willing to fix it, yeah.
And I just wanna confirm, how many signs do you currently operate around the nation?
Uh, what?
How many signs do you operate, does your company operate around the nation?
Oh, I don't have the exact number, because we have too many projects, some are halfway, so sometimes it's hard to say, like, is this considered to be called a project? But as far as completed signs, twenty-five-ish, twenty-five-ish. But I will say, though, sometimes the number doesn't, the quantity sometimes is misreading, because you can have one sign, like, we have, we have two signs in Newport News, Virginia. Those two signs, in terms of everything, whether it's revenue or capital investment, they're worth more than ten other signs in Pittsburgh. So sometimes the quantity is misreading, but, but yes, we are willing to do, like, a bond or covenant, yes, that's a very legit concern, so we would be willing to do that.
Would this be one-sided or two-sided? I didn't catch that.
It'll be two-sided, there'll be a northbound and southbound, but it is on one structure.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
As far as, you know, having, looking like the city endorses this, it's gone both ways. We've had cases where it's gone both ways. Sidney, Ohio, they loved it. It says, "Welcome to the city of Sidney." People, actually, when we put it up, people used to call the city to think, like, they have to go through the city to get on the sign. Then we've had signs, like, in Newport News, Virginia, where we offered to do some like this, but due to the same concern, they didn't even want to put their name on the sign for that specific reason. So it does go both ways, and we're willing to go either way. Like, you know, if you would love to just build a normal sign that doesn't, you know, seem like it's endorsed by the city, we're just trying to find a way that we can partner with the city, with the village.
What, you haven't said specifically what size of sign you would put?
You know, signs down seventy-five, it's literally ninety percent of the signs out there. On seventy-five, it's easily ninety percent of every sign. That is the size in Cincinnati, most major cities, that is the standard size of a billboard. That's the maximum size you can have.
And what do our zoning laws permit as far as sign size now? Mr. Elmer, Mr. Elmer is the administrative associate, assistant to the mayor. What size do they allow now?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the current code allows a maximum sign of two hundred square feet.
Two hundred square feet?
That's correct.
And this would be?
Three times a, a little more than three times a.
That's for a pole sign.
But that's only the sign, it's not the structure or anything else. That's what pumps it up to the twelve-hundred.
Correct.
Excuse me, I need clarification on that, because I understood that originally, the application was for twelve-hundred, and then it got changed or modified to the six seventy-two.
Yes, yes. So, before proceeding any further, just a couple quick observations, and that is, typically, when there is an appeal that's being made to council, it's based on the merits of, or based on the applicant providing some demonstration to this board that the, that the BZA erred in their decision. This is not the form, and I would strongly discourage council from engaging in a negotiation on what a sign might or might not look like. The facts that are in front of you today are pretty straightforward, and that is, they have appealed a decision from the BZA for a, they want a twelve-hundred-square-foot sign, when our code allows for a two-hundred-square-foot sign. They also want it to be seventy feet tall, instead of thirty-five, thirty-five feet, thirty-five feet tall. They also appealed the decision of the BZA on the, the decision to turn down the permit for this. There was an appeal on, or there was an appeal to the decision of the zoning inspector. Everything else is a variance request. So typically, today, you would be hearing from the applicant their rationale and explanation for why you should grant what they're asking, not an open-ended negotiation about what you think you might want or not want, especially when there has been nothing presented to you, in front of you. There hasn't been an alternative to that presented, at least, not that I'm aware of.
No, I agree with you, and that was the question that I had, as to what exact, this public hearing is for both the appeal and for the variance?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's a third component to it, which is also the content, which I believe Kathy can explain further, and how recent court decisions, higher-level court decisions have put or...
Between, I mean, between the decision on the twelve-hundred, now they're coming in saying they need six seventy-two. Is that correct?
That, that sounds like what they're asking.
So, so that's, but, so, to shorten the process, I mean, that would go back to plan...
It's nice to have somebody come before you and want to work with the community, that's a, that's a positive thing. What we have heard, the mayor and myself and others have already heard, when they came after the BZA decision, and so, as you can see, there is not in your packet a recommendation or an opinion from staff or the mayor on what they have, are currently now re-proposing in front of you today. So in other words, it was a thank you, but no thank you at that time. That's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
Kathy, are we, are we correct in that it's an up and, or down vote on the twelve-hundred and the seventy-foot pole, at this point?
Correct.
Can I, can I comment, please? So, specifically, this is relating to case number EDB twenty-one, and a sixty-foot-tall sign, not the twelve-hundred size. In retrospect, perhaps we should have led with the six hundred seventy-two, but in our application, we thought, oh, well, this is just something that was permitted loosely by ODOT, so let's just make the request not specifically. But to be clear, in the documents that have been submitted on our EDB twenty-one-six and EDB twenty-one-seven, we're asking for six hundred seventy-two square feet and a height of sixty feet. This is a really unusual case in the sense that, well, normally, we probably wouldn't do an appeal and a variance, because we're certainly asking for variances from the code. The code doesn't permit six hundred seventy-two square feet signs, it doesn't permit sixty-feet signs. However, there was a Supreme Court case law relating to off-site signs. The Sixth Circuit, where Ohio's located, came out with a decision that said, "Oh, you can't prohibit off-site signs. They, that's unconstitutional, you gotta permit off-site signs." Well, the Supreme Court of the United States recently came out with a decision that no one wants, no one cares for the details, but in essence said, "Well, we don't think the analysis done by the Sixth Circuit's right. We remand the case, the case is ongoing." All that to say that, if it wasn't for the Supreme Court of United States case law, a recent decision, and if it wasn't for the Sixth Circuit case law, we wouldn't have done an appeal and a variance. But it was sort of ambiguous. And Tim Burke, who I work with on a number of matters and is a good attorney, recommended that we do an appeal of the decision, just because it was a little bit ambiguous, and that ambiguity has since changed. We did request the six hundred seventy-two square feet before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I think, I think you're probably right to say that it was a thanks, but no thanks, and one of the reasons they said is, they didn't think it was appropriate for them to grant the relief we were seeking, because they thought it was a council decision, and I think that's right. I think this is a decision for this group to make, but you're certainly within your authority to approve our variances. By us giving options, we are proposing conditions that are, could lawfully be included as part of an approval. The approval being a variance for the size, height, and off-premises sign. So that wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a saying that there's any reason to appeal or anything wrong with your off-site, off-premises restriction, but that you are granting a variance for it. And as conditions for approval, the variance, you could say, the applicant is required to maintain the property and post a bond for maintenance. The applicant is required to provide five hundred and forty spots as a, as a floor for free advertising to support the village of Evendale. The applicant is required to get approval for the design prior to construction. I'm just throwing out ideas that I think would be helpful. But I believe that this has been properly presented to the body that we are appealing from, and we're properly presenting it to you here today for a decision. If, if this is something that you think is, would be good for the community, we certainly think it would be, we certainly think it'd be good for the Teamsters, we would love to be able to work and come up with a proposal that fits for Evendale. And I believe that's, I just would like to respond to those statements, and I appreciate where you're coming from. And, go on.
Ms. Holly's correct. They had argued as part of their appeal that the off-premises versus on-premises distinction was unconstitutional based on our Sixth Circuit case law. Recent City of Austin Supreme Court decision, as it stands, essentially overturns that and says that that off-premises versus on-premises distinction is, is okay to regulate. So while that part of it, that constitutes... So while that part of it that constitutes the appeal has changed because of circumstances that occurred after their filing, the other numerical kind of things are, are kind of an up-down vote. However, if there is some occasion where council believes there's some conditions or anything like that that you want to apply, as, as David had said, possibly you can. But that would probably be more appropriate to be continued until we get more information. Otherwise, if, if you decide to, whether this is a approval or denial, that in and of itself is an appropriate thing to do as to the numerical variance request.
I just wanna make sure we're procedurally proceeding, you know, and that, properly, and that what Mr. Elmer was saying is, you know, we're not here to negotiate whether it's 672 or 1,200 or anything in between. But it seems like that's what they're asking, is that us to kind of go back and we're throwing in terms and conditions that, you know, they're willing to agree to, but that's all negotiations. And they've been very accommodating and certainly we appreciate their coming out and, uh, they seem to be good partners. But that's all part of the discussion and negotiation of what we'd be comfortable with. And from what you're saying and what Mr. Elmer's saying is that procedurally, it doesn't seem like it's the appropriate time to be doing that and that we could deny it, but then revisit this with a new application, unfortunately. I just wanna make sure we're moving forward procedurally correctly.
Certainly. And if, if you wish to deny it and allow them to just reapply from the beginning with the new request, with a different variance, different height variance, different size variance, as long as those requests differ from what this one did, then they could certainly reapply and kind of begin that process over. And that could be one of the, that can be an approach you take.
And I look at this as an appeal from a requirement of 200 square feet to 672 square feet. That's what the appeal is. And whether we want to grant a variance to that extent. And that, to me, is yes or no.
Yes.
No, I thought...
But that's a number, dash seven, are the three things they talked about on this one in our packet.
Yeah.
Page nine. Nope, the other one, Mayor. The other packet. Right to your right. Covering those three items, but they're not covering...
Everything tonight, though, it's been discussed, is 672 square feet, that I've heard.
And the 60 feet?
And the 60 feet. Yeah.
We're voting on the original proposal tonight.
Yeah, I mean, that's the appeal. And that's, that's my concern is, is whether, you know, we like the 672 and 60 or not, that's not properly before us.
It is.
Yes, it is.
That's what I'm asking Kathy.
Dash seven is. Dash six is also in our packet earlier.
That's what's before us. 672 square feet versus 200.
And if you find that the 60 feet, 60-foot height and the 672 square foot sign face request
Right.
does not meet the variance standards,
Right.
then you can simply deny that.
For, for a quick reference document, if you go to my May 3rd memo, um, uh, down in the bottom right-hand corner, it's labeled, um, you'll see the blue one in the circle. If you go to pages eight, nine, and 10, those are the final decisions that were appealed to you today. And those would be the ones that you would be contemplating a ruling on, uh, here.
That's what I was asking. I was referring to the, the public hearing, page, or document number two or page two.
Mm-hmm.
And I was referring to this where it says the variance. And I was looking at, referring to that.
So, um, again, just to briefly summarize, I think that what would be before you today is, on, on page eight, the final decision is whether or not...
Now, which, which, okay, now what are you talking about?
I'm, uh, uh, page eight.
Okay, I, I got you now. I got you now.
The decision in front of you today is to either uphold or, uh, reverse the final decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the denial of the zoning administrator's denial of the permit.
Of dash six, not of dash seven.
That's correct, yes.
And dash six is the appeal that they originally appealed on the basis of the Sixth Circuit case law that stated that the off-site, onsite distinction is unconstitutional. However, since then, the Supreme Court has ruled that it is constitutional to regulate that aspect of content essentially. So you can rule, at least with respect to the dash six appeal, with that Supreme Court case in mind that finds it is appropriate to distinguish between the two and say, "Yes or no, you, you can or cannot have that sort of content on your sign."
Yes.
And then the dash seven goes into the numerical requests.
Okay, anything, anybody, any? Yes, I am.
Um, so, EDB 21-6 and dash seven have both been appealed. Um, if the concern is that the public notice doesn't reference dash seven, that, I believe that's a Scrivener's error in, with respect to the public notice.
It does.
Oh, it does reference dash seven? Oh, great, okay.
That's in front of them today as well.
Okay, awesome.
Six and seven.
Okay, well, I, great. So, dash seven requests the variances. So, in addition to the Supreme Court stuff, which, um, so we could say, "Okay, the Supreme Court, under the Supreme Court precedent, you can't restrict off-site signs." That's one argument that we had before based upon the Supreme Court. "Let's not even look at that. Let's not even touch that. That's since changed. No one wants to get into that." You can make a variance to the off-site restriction. And so it's one of the ways in which variances are required for approval here. Um, and for the reasons we've discussed, we think variances would be appropriate. Um, and conditions are, can be provided. I appear all around the state and very frequently when zoning relief is provided, there's conditions in place. Yes, you can put in this, this building, but you need to have this buffering and it needs to be maintained. And if you stop maintaining it, you're gonna be in violation of zoning. That's the way that the world goes around and there's no reason that people would keep their yards looking good, I don't think, or businesses in some places if that wasn't the case. Um, I, there is one more person I would like to talk, if that's all right. I, I know that we're, we kind of...
Running out of time.
I understand.
Council meeting starts in four minutes.
Okay, um, very quickly.
Hi, everyone. My name's Dan Nielsen. I'm VP of Kenjo. I'm kind of the map guy. I'll just, I'll say that. I'm, I'm, I'm real good at maps and niches and finding these locations that you can get ODOT permits. And what I can tell you is if, if we place the sign properly, properly on Teamster's property, um, there would not be another option for someone else, some other, uh, sign company to come in and get another ODOT permit. Which I think is important to say that our sign would be the only one, if, you know, if it were to happen tonight. Our sign would be the only one allowed by ODOT. So no matter what happens next, no one could come in.
Thank you.
Okay. What's the pleasure of council?
Well, I mean, isn't this a public hearing?
Please?
This is just a public hearing, right?
That's right. We could consider it a later date.
Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't think it was appropriate to, to, to decide one way or the other. I thought this was to get the information for which we would make a decision based on.
All right. We'll take it under consideration then. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Especially considering two council members are not here.
Yeah, but...
They're, they're not hearing.
They don't hear it anyway. They won't have heard the back and forth anyway. All right, we have a lot of people coming in and, uh...[1628.54]